Yeah, it was pretty bad, actually.
All right. Welcome to Southwest Ranches Town Hall. We have a special workshop this evening that's starting at 6:30 right now. And I'm pleased to see folks here. And if we can call roll.
Mayor Bright Cruz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Albritton.
Present.
Councilmember Hartman.
Here.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Here.
Councilmember Kaczynski.
He is absent.
He is absent. We have a quorum.
Thank you. All right. If you please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, gentlemen, I'd like to make a motion that we excuse Councilman Kaczynski from this meeting.
Second.
Can I get a second?
Can I get a discussion on that? We've got a motion and a second.
Okay, good.
Okay, please call the roll.
Councilmember Hartman.
Here.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton.
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. David is up in Panama City helping his mom, so. All right. So, we do have the workshop that we will have between now and seven o'clock. We've got 30 minutes. And this was a workshop that I called for because frankly, we're hearing a lot of conversations about noise. And I've heard from residents saying that it is something we need more controls over. And I've heard residents that feel like it's too restrictive. And so, the best way to do that is to have a town hall meeting where folks can come out and they can express their views. Certainly, I know the council wants to hear those views, but I think as residents, it's good to hear what other people are thinking as well. So, what we're going to do is, this is a workshop. There's not going to be any votes or anything like that during this meeting. This is a time for the public to speak and for the council to listen and residents to listen. And what we literally want to do, from my perspective, when I requested this, was I really wanted to hear ideas on how we can improve our current sound ordinances, noise ordinance. So, if you have recommendations or things that you feel there's ways to improve it, that would be awesome. I would love to hear that. And so, we only have 30 minutes. I'm going to ask that you try and stick with three minutes on your comments. I don't know. I suspect there may be some more folks coming on here. I want to make sure everybody has a chance to speak. If we have extra time within the 30 minutes and everybody has spoken, I'm certainly open to letting folks speak a second time. I do want to reserve the last five to 10 minutes for the council in case they have any comments. I suspect I'll have some comments and maybe some other council members will have some comments, too, after we've heard what different folks are thinking and what their ideas are. So, with that, I ask everybody to be respectful, understand that this is a situation where we disagree, which is, it's fine. And so, we just want to be respectful and listen to everybody's opinion respectfully. All right. So, with that, I'm going to open it. Well, let me just say this. Any comments from any other council before we get started? All right, we're good. So, let me open it up to the public, then. Looking forward to hearing what different folks' thoughts and ideas are. No, but it will be.
There needs to be some clarification, the difference between a gathering and a party. Because people have gatherings, family gatherings, that sort of stuff, that aren't loud. They park inside their property. And they're not causing any disturbance to the neighborhood. But if someone decides that they want to cause a problem for that individual, they'll report them. And then, they'll have to break it up at that point. So, and I'm just thinking that on a large family gathering, say at Thanksgiving, and you're having problems with ABC down the road, then you could be in trouble if we don't have a definition of what a gathering is, et cetera, et cetera.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good point.
Hello, Mike Spitzer, 195th Terrace. I could probably summarize by example the reason I'm here this evening. And I think this is the kind of problem where if a person does not have the problem themselves or experiencing it, they can't really understand or understand what the problem is. So, I'll relate my own personal experience. I've lived here in the ranches for 24 years. And for the first half of those years, we had no real problems at all. This was the quiet rural place that we all expected to be. But now, far too often, I would say probably, not quite, but close to every other weekend, we're now sitting in our house, which I should mention, has double insulated impact doors and windows, an acre property. And all of a sudden, far too often these days, here's what we're hearing in the house. When I go outside, it's not next door neighbor. It's not even somebody on our street. When I get in the car and track it down, it might be, remember, I'm on 195th. It could be over on 196th. It could be on 192nd, on the other side of the 30-acre frontier trails, or as far away as 199th. And so, for the next four or five hours inside the house while we're trying to watch TV. Now, my criteria is really simple. We don't live in zero lot lines or apartments here. And anybody is certainly free, myself included, to have birthday parties or whatever with family. But there is no reason, just because I want to have a party for my wife for her birthday, that I need to impact the 50 other houses around me. Because my right to do something on my property does not mean I have the right to infringe on everybody in a mile radius around me. And that, to me, is the underlying problem that I mostly have had out here. When I discuss the noise problem, I'm lucky. I don't have any problems with my nearby neighbors. Inevitably, it's always something that I can get in a car and track down and find two or three streets away. And to me, by any definition, there is no defense for that. There's no justification for it. And there's no argument for it. This is not a matter of somebody saying, "Oh, I have a right to do it." No. This is simply being rude and considerate. Because there's no reason for me entertaining a group of people for a birthday party or something in my house, that I need to be so loud that I'm pumping a 2,000-watt sound system in my backyard that can be heard from a mile away inside other people's houses. For me, that's a very clear-cut example. I'm sure this evening, we will hear other examples that people have to offer, where maybe it's not so cut and dry, where maybe it's a different kind of problem. But this is the kind of problem which we never seem to have to have our first 10, 15 years living here. But now, like I said, it's every other weekend, to the point my wife says, "I wonder if this will be a pleasant weekend, or if we're going to be sitting here for a couple hours, having to call the police a couple of times." Because inside our own house, behind closed doors and windows, we're hearing from three streets away. And that really sums up, in my short time here, in about three minutes, the situation that we've been experiencing and why I'm involved in this. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you.
My name is Bill Buzzey. I'm a neighbor of Mike. I live across the street from him and also down the block from Steve. I had to call Steve one time about a year ago because a neighbor next door was having a party. The music was blasting, 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 as Mike just described with a boom, boom, boom. And Steve came down. He spoke with the homeowner and told the homeowner, "Hey, please, you've got to turn this music down. You're breaking the audience, the ordinance." And he said, "Okay. I didn't know about it. I have family and friends from another country and we're having a party. He said, "I'll take care of it." He took care of it for 15 minutes. All of a sudden, boom, the music goes again. The police come out the second time. And finally, he decided that it would be man enough to turn it off. Now, that's one incident. He has calmed down, the neighbor next door, and for the past year has been quiet. Now, we have a new person behind us who just, every weekend, totally, like he says, a 2,000-watt system, nonstop, for seven hours one day. And you know what? He got a permit. He's got a party permit, which he felt gives him like a Willy Wonka golden ticket to do whatever he wants. Whoever, you know, provides the residents with these permits, really have to explain to them that there still is an ordinance, a noise ordinance, that has to be followed. It doesn't mean because you have a permit, you could do whatever you want. On that occasion, I called the Davy Police. They show him the permit that he has, and Davy Police backs off. "We've got to get this together, folks. This is not working the way you have it set up now. I want to thank you for your time and please..." I've been in this Southwest Ranches for 45 years now, and it has never, never gotten to the stage that it is now, at least in our area. So, please help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, listen, I've gotten a lot of calls on this. I know there's more ideas and more thoughts out there than what we've heard so far.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. John Garrati, 162nd Avenue. I've been out in the ranches 23 years. And yes, of course, you have to have a noise ordinance and of course, you have to have rules and regulations. I think the one we have now is affecting more of the new residents that are moving in from a different demographic. Reason why I say that is, my own block has a different demographic. The solution, I don't know. I'm not a noise expert. I'm not a party expert. But there are folks that are being affected for stuff as simple as a birthday party. I've witnessed it next door. It's very embarrassing that I have to explain. I'm like, "Yeah, our noise ordinance doesn't have many parameters." So, if you don't have a time, I mean, I think a time is important because a 24-hour noise ordinance would be kind of, to me, like a gag order. I think you've got to have some parameters of time. To me, that's the most important thing, to keep it believable. Because a lot of the folks that come from other areas, again, I've mentioned it many times, communication is the key to many of the successes of any town. But just simple things, maybe a poll, send out something, "Hey, what do you guys think? Do you guys know the rules?" Communication. A time, I think a time, going back to some sort of a time, "Hey, you've got this timeframe." If you do get a party permit, you've got X amount of time, but don't get too crazy. However, that can get spelled out in layman's terms, because sometimes this doesn't coincide to the regular public, especially a different demographic. But that's my two cents. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Jill Aronofsky, 5781 Southwest 188th Avenue. Mayor Bright Cruz and the council. I'm here representing Moms Demand Action. And this is a proclamation of...
Jill, can I just interrupt you just for a second? This is a workshop before the regular council meeting, so this workshop is specifically for the sound ordinance. But during public comment, you're right on target.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jill. Any other comments on the sound ordinance?
Debbie Green, 5201. Sorry, I arrived late, so I'm, I don't have any suggestions. But I just think there is more, there is an issue. And I don't know how you fix it, but, and we've been out here for over 30 years, and it does seem to be more and more. And I don't know if it's just less consideration for your neighbors. But in all the years, in all the big parties we've had, whether birthday parties or holidays, whatever it is, all of the noise from our party stays within our property. It doesn't go out into the neighbors next door, across the street, wherever. So, I think it is more of people who are having parties with these big sound systems and DJs, that if you want to have that kind of party, then maybe it really shouldn't be at your home. Because I just think there just needs to be the consideration for your neighbors.
Okay.
Me, I'm Valerie Duendre.
Thank you.
Been here for 23 years. And I'm going to say that one thing that is disturbing is that we have to call on our neighbor. You talked about, you know, people, what do you call that, the control being proactive?
Yes.
But it's a problem. Because we're going to have an issue in the future. That's what I'm concerned of. Because, not to mention that it's not confidential. So, that means people are calling on their neighbor, and now they know who has called on them. And that can create future, you know, issues of violence. And that's a concern for me. So, maybe in the future, what would be a good idea is for the town people to drive around on the weekend, you know, around certain time. I know it's going to be more expensive because they have to be there. But I think it would be a better idea than having, you know, neighbor calling on another neighbor, which is, as I said. So, that's all I wanted to say.
Great. Thank you. Anybody that has not spoken that wants to speak?
Why don't you hinder the mic? Thank you.
That's fine. Yeah, no, I totally get it. I totally get it. We need to follow some rules, too, but I think this is a good compromise in the middle.
Okay. I've had numerous problems, and I've called and complained numerous times. And I understand both sides of what you said from the beginning. Because why should I get my way and just have a total silence? Then I wa, you know, that's not what I asked for. But in thinking about all of it, number one, somebody had mentioned something about this, it's the speakers. Actually, I've gotten friendly with a couple of my neighbors. Where the beginning, we had arguments about this and we worked it out. But again, who am I to say total silence? You know, you can't... These people have had parties a second time, and they don't even turn the radio, nothing. And I didn't ask for that. But what I asked for was the speaker, because it was too loud. And our houses are so close together, the way the properties are set up. That part and the bass. It's the bass. You know, I even tell the police, when they come out, I try to talk to them and like, and then, a lot of it comes in my barn. See, where I live, there's houses all around me, but not all of them are playing it. But the noise, like he was making the noise earlier, and it's just, it's like, and when I'm in my barn, and sometimes other noises will come on, I feel like one of my horses is in distress. It scares me. I'm like, "What was that?" There are noises that come out of these, and it's bass. It's bass. I'm sure there's been parties, but that's how I see it. Like, I see it both ways, but I can't, I don't know what it is. My stomach gets tight. I, it comes in my house, too. And I'll be just, I'll have my TV up loud. I'll turn it up louder, and I still hear it.
Right.
It's bass. And my sister says, you know, the way that these radios and these songs are designed, there's bass in all of them. And it just, that's all you hear. So, that's, that and the speaker is the biggest problem. But like, I go to my barn and I put my radio on, and enough for me to hear it in there. And sometimes, I'll turn it up loud and stuff, but because it's this radio and it's just regular music and it doesn't have a ton of bass, you can't hear it all over the place. I just hear it in my barn. So, that is really what I think is the biggest problem. And again, it's been other things, too, like a set of drums. That was, it's just stuff like that. We all know that that stuff is going to travel far. And that's another thing I try to tell the police, that they'll be at the front of the road and they can't even hear what I'm talking about. I'm like, "Walk to this other side of my house." It's the, you know how noise bounces off of things? That's another thing, too. I hear the traffic from Sheridan. I hear it on the wall in front of my house. And I'm on Old Sheridan. And that, I mean, I don't hear it when I'm down at my gate, but when I get up by my wall, I hear it. It's weird, the way the noise bounces and off of things, too. But I know we can't control things that happen. I mean, it'll be more difficult. But, you know, like with my neighbors, I mean, just play the radio, play your music, but don't play it, you know, on a speaker, where it's going to blare. You know, that's kind of...
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. And thanks, Mike. Anybody else that has not yet spoken that would like to speak on this topic? I don't see anyone, Mike, if you'd like to.
Like I said, a few minutes ago when I was here, I only summarized, you know, why it's an issue for me and how it concerns us. But now, especially, it's a perfect time, following up after that discussion. I guess some of you guys know I was a sound engineer, worked in the recording industry. And at my house over the years, not now, because I'm not in that industry anymore, but I had a recording studio at the house, a full recording studio. So, if anybody's familiar with artists like Zack Wild, Ozzy Osbourne, Judas Priest, some of those guys were at my house recording guitars. But I can guarantee you, not the next door neighbor didn't even hear a peep. Because I took the measures to use soundproofing and/or power attenuation or anything else that's necessary, because I knew nobody else needed to hear my noise. Now, that probably stems from my childhood. We come from a generation, of course, that courtesy for your neighbors was a top consideration. Even as kids, we were out in our yard playing and screaming to yell loud. Even our parents would say, "Hey, quiet down. You're going to bother the neighbors." So, we know that was a mindset. There seems to be a mindset, like somebody spoke about demographics a few minutes ago, where it seems to be about me, me, me. I'm going to do what I please because my rights are all that matters. Don't matter about anybody else. Okay? My personal opinion is, what you do on your property, I don't care. You can film XXX-rated porn movies if you want. You can have parties, doesn't matter. But if I'm sitting here a block away, I shouldn't forced to be, should not be forced to be a participant in it, in my own house, on my own property. Because now, it's not about your rights anymore. You're crossing over to my, you're trespassing onto me. To talk about solutions and ideas, I think one problem, and this is just looking at some of the logic of the situation, looking at ours to say, well, you can be loud this time of day, but you can't in another. There's a logical flaw there, because not, the entire world does not work on nine to five, Monday through Friday shifts. We've got doctors, lawyers, surgeons, ENT. My wife's a nurse. You know, she's obviously, she's getting up at 3:00 in the morning, she's going to bed at 6:00 in the evening. So, obviously, you know, it's just saying, well, you can be as loud as you want until 11:00 would be an issue. Because not everybody in the world works on the Monday through Friday, you know, weekend shifts. The talk about the noise and the low bass frequency, that is certainly one of the number one problems you have to deal with. Technically speaking, not to get too mumbo jumbo into technical, it has to do with subharmonic bass. In the studios, if we're working with rock music and not hip-hop or rap, we filter that stuff off because that's not desirable. The problem with subharmonic bass is actually, technically, you as a human don't hear it. You feel it. So, if you go to a party, for example, it's powering, say, a large subharmonic bass system, you may find out that if you go across the street or as far as an eighth of a mile away, you will actually hear it louder than if I'm standing three foot from the speaker. And the reason is, the waveform, it's a low-frequency waveform, it takes about an eighth of a mile for a 40 or 30 hertz wavelength to form. And that's why you have the weird phenomenon, if we want to use cars, for example. You might hear a car coming down the street, but you hear nothing else. Only right when the car passes you, do you hear the cymbals, the horns, the vocalist singing. But quickly and rapidly, as that passes you, that disappears. But two blocks away, you will still hear that low frequency. And one of the reasons is, you're not directly always hearing it. For example, if you're inside your house, you might actually be hearing the resonance of the concrete vibrating. It might be imperceptible to you visually, but that's what you're really getting is that resonance frequency. So, I mean, we could talk about solutions. One thing is, one of the persons here had, raised an excellent point. And that is, large part, I could argue that when you're in your own home, on your own property, behind closed doors and windows, for all practical purposes, the outside world should seem to disappear. You really shouldn't be impacted, especially out here, as I say, because we don't live in apartments or zero lot lines. We've got one, three, five acres or more property. And I can certainly have a birthday party on my own property, as the one resident's proved. She says, "I've done it for years, and we didn't bother anybody." We obviously used to be able to do it out here, because as I said, I lived out here 23 years, as some of the other people here mentioned tonight. And they said, "You know, we didn't have this problem in the past." Well, you can't tell me people weren't having birthday parties or whatever. Of course, we were. We were just more considered what we did. And you can certainly have a party, and you can entertain people on your one, three, or five acre property, and set it up in such a way to ensure that you're not bothering people two, three streets away. I mean, to me, this is very simple, I'll be honest. To me, it's cut and dry. There is zero excuse for justifying that kind of behavior. If I've got 20 people at my home for my birthday party, there's no reason I have to be so loud that I'm disturbing the other 50 houses in a mile radius around me. I don't have a right to do that. There's no defense for that. And I would argue with anybody who wants to get up here and try to defend it, yes, I should have the right to do that. I'll debate them down to the ground on that issue, because there's no grounds to stand on. It's a totally illogical argument. I would say, on the contrary, if you feel obsessed that I must be that loud, I have to be at 150 decibels, and I've got to be pumping subharmonic bass through a 2,000-watt sound system, then you know what? With rights come responsibilities. And that means a residential neighborhood is not the place to have it. You need to go rent a proper assembly hall to conduct that kind of activity. If you're going to have a party in a residential neighborhood, then you need to act like a residential neighbor. And like the noise ordinance says, we have it already in there in definition, a receiving land. You make sure, as the one resident here stated, when I have a party or activity, that activity stays on my property, within reason, of course.
Right.
And I'm not crossing into five streets down, three streets down, 10 houses away, inside their own home, behind closed doors and windows.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mike. All right. I'm going to, I think everybody's had an opportunity to speak, and I appreciate everybody coming out. I took a number of notes. I'm just going to run through a couple of things real quick. Like I said, there's no decisions tonight, but I really appreciate everybody coming out and passing on their experience, their thoughts, the thoughts they have around recommendations. You know, amplified sound, I think, is the biggest issue. It's interesting, we do already have in there that if it's not amplified sound, somebody's speaking, yelling, or whatever, it's not controlled by the sound ordinance. So, clearly, that, we might need to tweak that a little, though. The proactive versus reactive, I appreciate that comment. That is a bigger debate for the entire town. And I'm afraid that if we were to make any changes along those lines, that would overstep everything else that we would do, drown it out. And I don't think we'd make a lot of progress. So, I get what you're saying. I'm not discounting it. I'm not sure that that's going to work into this. Let's see. Yeah, I think one of the keys is, as was said by a number of residents, I think the real key is, right now, the sound ordinance talks about keeping the sound onto your own property. That's really tough to do. I don't think that's a, that's, and remember, any ordinance we pass, it's got to do two things. One is, it's got to make sense. It's got to be logical. And then, the second piece, it's got to be enforceable. And, you know, if I'm, if I'm, it's very difficult to keep sound, any sound, to your own property, you know? It's, that's, it's almost impossible. So, I think that needs to be adjusted. I think that needs to be. And one of the things that came up here a number of times was hearing the sound inside your house. That's a whole nother matter. That, I think, is enforceable, and I think that makes a ton of sense. Another element, I think, is education. And it's not only resident education, but I think once we get this in place, it's education for Davy PD as well. Because as Bill said, I've had some direct conversations on site of these events. And I've found that, that depending on the officer I'm talking to, I get a different response to a number of different questions. So, I think, and I think one of the reasons why we do that is because I think the way the ordinance is written today, it's very, very difficult to enforce. And so, when it's very difficult to enforce, what do you do? What happens? The officers have a judgment call to make. where everybody is going to say, great job, this is exactly the way I wanted it. But we need to improve on what we're doing, and I'm not, I'm not sure that a time element is in there, but I'm not sure that it's not in there either. So, we'll see how that, see how that plays out. But those are my thoughts. I know I had called this, I wasn't really expecting the council to speak on this. I do want to open it up just in case. Are we good, or? Yeah?
Just a couple of observations, and this, this came from, not from this meeting, but from residents who knew it was coming and mentioned it to me.
Good.
The question mark on the thirty-person threshold for a permit, do we want to expand that a little bit, make it forty or fifty, you know, something to that effect? And also, we charge for a permit, I believe, and should we make the permit free? But require it, you know? So, that's just an issue to think about.
Yeah.
You know, at this point. You're right, it's hard to stop noise from escaping the immediate property. Do we want to differentiate between music and human voices? When you get thirty, forty people together, it's quite a crowd, and they're talking a lot, and they're mostly outdoors. If it's a pool party...
Right.
And kids are splashing in the pool and the whole enchilada, you know, do we want to count that as something, as a penalty or anything like that? Obviously, I don't think so.
Right.
And, you know, go from there. One of the big problems that hasn't been mentioned here tonight, but I think it's really at the forefront, is the Airbnbs.
Yeah.
And they don't have any rules, and they don't care about any rules, until the police show up, and then the rules become something. And they, unfortunately...
Let me be clear, they do fall under the same rules, they just think they don't have the same rules.
Right, right.
I just want to be clear that...
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I'm sorry if I misspoke on that. Yeah, their rules are the same as anybody else's, but they go into huge parties, and we know where all the Airbnb houses are because of the noise levels and the reports and the police reports. You can just run down the roster on the weekends. So, we can't treat the Airbnbs different than the residents, unfortunately, but we need to go through that permitting process, where the police have a list of all the permits, the resident, I don't know if we need that, the residents need to have a list. I would hate to have an Airbnb across the street from me or beside me, but I know plenty of people who do.
Yeah.
And I know a lot of people, including myself, have party houses where they have professional sound systems, or right across the street from each other, and it takes a bit of educating on both sides of the wire to know when it's too much.
Right.
You know, stuff like that. You know, the biggest thing I'm hearing right now is that we need more control over sound from all the people that spoke. The, one speaker mentioned that the demographic is changing in the town, new people moving in, you know, I paid a million dollars for this, so I'm going to, I'm going to, you know, really rock the town kind of situation, and that mindset is, doesn't work.
It's not good.
Yeah, and I see that, I see that more and more, and we need to figure out a way to control that in the future. And I'm just going over a couple of notes here on, that's, I'll hold to that.
Okay. Good. Yeah, thanks, Gary. I just want to reinforce one of the points you made that did not come earlier, but, well, actually, two of them. So, the party permit, I think that definitely needs a relook at. I think there's a lot of misconceptions about what allows, what that allows you to do and what it doesn't. That does not in any way change or modify your, that you have to follow the noise ordinance. So, and then the other, Airbnb is...
Yeah, I think with the party permit, the biggest problem I'm hearing is when the party is very, very loud, and it's all over the place...
Yeah.
And the police are called out, and the police show up, and they show them the permit, and the police...
That's...
Oh, they got a permit, so they don't need...
That's part of the education.
I think the education...
That's part of...
Needs to be also with the Davy PD, that the same rules apply, whether they've got that piece of paper or not.
That's what I was referring to earlier.
Yeah.
Yes, I agree 100%.
I'm putting it in plain English.
Yeah.
You're being nice.
And as far as the Airbnbs, we are considering, it's under, in process, I think we'll get there, to register those and be able to handle those better.
Let me just have one quick one.
Yeah.
So, there's an exemption section in here on different exemptions from the, from the noise ordinance, like refuse collection, the garbage trucks can't violate the law, they're exempt from it, but, and construction, you know, off-hours, things like that. But what worries, what bothers me a little in here is any noise generated on a town-owned piece of property, which is authorized by the town, is exempt, and any noise generated by the town or a town event is exempt. I don't know if I like those.
All right, well...
Because we live by a different set of rules than the residents do. That's not really fair.
I'm not going to, I mean...
Yeah, but most, but most of that's been, when we have that, it's either at like the Preserve or the Barn...
Or the Barn, yeah.
Or Equestrian Park.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, they're not...
I mean, I get what you're saying, but, well, we can debate it in the future.
Yeah, we'll debate it, yes. To me, why should the town have the exemption? Why should we impact people the way we don't want others to impact people? So...
I think because we're doing a community event where everybody's invited. I think that's one of the reasons.
We'll talk.
Jim?
Yeah, Steve. Steve, right now, if I'm not mistaken, you're allowed six permits per year.
Yeah.
Party permits.
Correct.
Am I correct?
Yeah, you're correct.
The first one costs seventy-five dollars, and the second one is, and third, fourth, fifth, whatever, twenty-five a piece. There's somebody that reviews those applications to make sure that they're not for profit, that they're not, you know, whatever. So, that person takes the time to do that. I don't know if the permits, and I don't know if they should be free. If you're going to pay that fee, then you probably will abide by the rules, you know, if you're going to go through that process of paying that fee and doing that. To limit the number of parties per year, I don't know. Six seems okay. If somebody wanted to change it to less, that might be all right, a few less, but to make it as, you know, free or to allow people to just do it on their own, I don't think that's a real good idea. And the number of people, is it currently you've got to have over thirty people before you need a permit? It's thirty people, right? That's a pretty good-sized party. So, if you don't have thirty people, then you don't need the permit, but the noise still affects people if it's way too loud. So, you know, there's a bunch of things like that that we do need to talk about, right?
Yes, there is.
Yeah.
Good. All right. Awesome. We went a little bit over, and I apologize for that, but I think it was a good discussion, and I really appreciate everybody coming out. I know it's an important issue, and it's a touchy issue. I appreciate very, very much the respect on both sides and how everybody was speaking. Very much appreciate that as well. So, we're going to take this back. You can see there's a variety of ideas, even up here, there's some different thoughts on different things. So, we're going to take that back, and we'll start hashing it out, and I think we have the start of making some improvements, so thank you for that. All right. Gary, we need some...
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. All right, so we'll adjourn, we'll take a two-minute break, and then we'll start a